All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, October 27, 2025. I will now call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Martinez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay. Anna, would you please do the voice roll call?
Chair Harland?
Here.
Vice Chair Zick?
Here.
Commissioner Rojas?
Here.
Commissioner Klepak?
Here.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
We have no announcements or presentations this evening. Takes us to public comments for matters not listed on the agenda. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. I'll open for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come to either lectern. Or if you are at home and want to participate on Zoom, use the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're joining the meeting by phone and'd like to speak, please press star nine. Anybody in chambers wish to speak? No? Okay. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Mike Fleming, you may provide your public comment.
Yes, hello, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
We cannot hear you speaking.
Hi, can you hear me now? Hello? Hello?
All right, I haven't started your time yet, Mike, so as soon as you press unmute, we can go ahead.
Oh. Where is unmute? Hello?
Do we have anybody else? And we can come back to them?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and nobody on phone?
No one's on the phone, no.
Okay, then let's give Mike one more chance.
Hello? 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 Hi, hello?
Okay.
Wait, hello? Hello?
There may be a separate window, according to Commissioner Dixon, for calling in.
Hello?
Okay. There we go. Welcome.
Oh my gosh, thank you so, so much. I really, really wanted to speak with you all, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Fleming. I'm the Vice President of the Seventeen West Master Association. We're a 172-unit condominium property, 26 of which are live-work condos. We're located between 17th Street, Pomona Avenue, and Superior Street. Earlier this year, our HOA hired an attorney, Sandra Gottlieb, to review our association's CCNR documents. During this review, she uncovered an issue when the city of Costa Mesa set the parking mandate in 2015 for the entire complex, which was under construction and was being approved. Basically, the city said that open parking spaces are to be used for clients of home-based companies living there and guests. There was no mention of parking areas for residents other than residents were to park in their two-car garage. The issue now in 2025 is cars like Tesla trucks and large Ford trucks cannot fit into the garage due to the height. Also, some large trucks that do fit are too wide to allow for a second car to park in the garage with it. This is because the city back then allowed the builder to reduce the garage sizes to less than that of a standard garage width. Because of this, our attorney advised our HOA that we can no longer enforce our HOA parking rules pertaining to towing of vehicles or sighting vehicles not belonging to residents that are actually parking on our property. Technically, our residents must actually park off-premises as spaces are designed per the mandate for clients and guests. Currently, less than 10 residents use their homes for business practices. We believe that the city was looking at, when they were looking at the city, when the city was looking at the Seventeen West project back in 2015, that something got overlooked, and I believe the planners did not intend to not allow residents to utilize open parking spaces when needed. Our property manager, Kim Province, with Optimum Property Management, had reached out to Jeffrey Raimondo by email in August, and I emailed the city attorney about the problem and received no response. Neither of us did. I decided to speak tonight and just ask for your help and support with our issue. Basically, we would like just to know that we can meet with someone, one of you, so that we can get this parking issue resolved and get our CCNRs in line so that we don't have people using our parking lot for airport parking and all kinds of other things that's happening now. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your comment.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else, Anna?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will now close public comments. And brings us to Planning Commission, comments and suggestions. Let's start with Commissioner Martinez, who I'm sure has a list of events for us to pay attention to.
That is exactly right. I have just two events tonight. On Thursday, the 30th, at 6:00 p.m., the Parks Commission, our friends over at Parks, are going to have a special meeting of their commission to specifically discuss the Fairview Park, the draft Fairview Park master plan. So if you are a fan of Fairview Park, you enjoy using it, I would highly suggest attending and giving your thoughts on future uses for the park. And then on November 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 here at City Hall, there will be a free paper shredding event that is sponsored by Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie Norris. So if you have a stack of documents that you need to shred, feel free to bring them over to City Hall, and they will take care of that for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you very much. A quick follow-up, public commentary regarding the gym, the 12 gym. There are no existing conditions for approval, staff looked into that, regarding noise from the original approvals, so it would default to the city's noise ordinance. So for the person who came in contacted, I would suggest if you have a problem, calling Code Enforcement Hotline and just taking it from there and following up with us if you don't feel that you're getting any attention. As far as Mr. Fleming, I was on the Planning Commission back in 2015 when that was approved, and I don't recall that exact, the details of that exact application. But the focus was on residents parking in their garages at that time. So I don't know, Director Tai, what's the best method for them to come in for some sort of amendment? Or does that something, I don't think that's something staff can handle. That would have to come back for the Planning Commission if anything were to be changed on their conditions of approval for their original approvals?
Commissioner Dixon, the proper protocol would be for the requestor to, they can send a note to planninginfo@costamesasca.gov, and it goes to the entire planning team, or call 714-754-5245 to start a conversation with our planning team. I understand the requestor mentioned that they had reached out to somebody. I do not have the details of that follow-up, so I can't speak to it. But they would first initiate that conversation with staff, and then if at such time an amendment of any application is needed, it would work through staff, and then if the appropriate decision body for the modification is the Planning Commission, then it would return to Planning Commission. So we would have to do the reconnaissance work to determine what the proper path is to achieve what the requestor's goal is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to piggyback on the gym issue. Ms. Corom provided us with a memo today, and I appreciate that. Thank you for the update. One thing of note is that there's a special event permit that's been issued for that property on November 9th, and I would appreciate if staff would let Ms. Semedo know that that's happening, since she has been very involved in what happens at this property for the last several years, and she should at least be apprised of that. Okay, let's move on. Commissioner Rojas?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Klepak?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Andrade?
Nothing specific, but just reinforcing the opportunities that the community has to share for the development of Fairview Park, our local nature park at the City Council Meeting, and also online. You can view the whole document and submit also via email your comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you, sir. So if Mike Fleming is still listening, if you would reach out and contact me through the city, they know how to get ahold of me, you can email me directly. My city website has my email address. This is an interesting topic, and I won't take up time here discussing it. But when you said less than 10% of the properties are used or have home businesses, that should raise some eyebrows on the effectiveness of these live-work developments for future reference. And reduced parking width, we just had a project not too long ago where guest parking widths were allowed to be, at the request of the developer, less than the recommended width. And there's an unintended consequence when you deviate from these standards, which are well-understood in the industry. So, Mike, please reach out to me, and I will help you get in touch with the right people at the city.
Okay, thank you. I have no comments tonight, so that takes us to our consent calendar. We have one consent calendar item tonight. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion, unless an item has been pulled by staff or the commission or the public. Anna, nothing's been pulled?
Nothing's been pulled, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have a motion on consent calendar item number one, which is the minutes of October 13, 2025?
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner Dixon. It's a call for the question.
That motion carries 7-0.
All right. We have one public hearing item tonight. Anna, would you please read the title for public hearing item number one?
Public hearing item number one, conditional use permit PCUP-25-0018 to operate a dog daycare, The Bone Home, at 1619 Superior Avenue, and conditional use permit PCUP-25-0019 amending PA-03-14 to modify the site plan of an existing dog daycare with overnight kenneling, The Bone Adventure, at 1629 Superior Avenue. Please note, we have received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any ex parte communications? Commissioner Klepak?
Yes, I met with the applicant yesterday, got a tour of the facility as well as the subject property next door, and I walked the neighborhood.
Okay. Commissioner Rojas?
I got an invitation to meet with the client, but I was unfortunately unable to do so, but I did drive the neighborhood to take a look.
Commissioner Andrade?
Similarly, toured the facility, got to meet with the applicant.
Okay. Vice Chair Zick?
I met with Brian and Diane on Friday. Very good meeting, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Exchanged messages with Diane.
Okay. And Commissioner Martinez?
Yesterday, I visited the property and took a tour.
Okay. And I had a brief email exchange with the applicant's representative. Okay, Mr. Garcia, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Fraylan Garcia, Assistant Planner with Economic and Development Services Department. As Anna mentioned, I will be presenting two conditional use permits, applications for The Bone Adventure located at 1619 and 1629 Superior Avenue. As shown on the slide, the two properties are located along Superior Avenue between West 16th Street and West 17th Street. The subject properties are zoned general industrial, MG, as are all the surrounding parcels. To the west and south are automotive businesses, Caliber Collision to the west, and a body shop to the south. To north is an industrial building containing multiple businesses, and to the east, the site front Superior Avenue. The proposal includes two separate entitlements for a dog daycare and kenneling facilities. Conditional use permit 250019 amends the existing facility at 1629 Superior Avenue by modifying the outdoor play area and parking lot. Conditional use permit 250018 establishes a new single-day dog daycare at 1619 Superior Avenue. Both sites would operate as a single business and would be open from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The application includes parking restructuring, expanded play areas, and new landscaping across both sites. The existing site at 1619 Superior Avenue is an 11,771-square-foot lot that contains five parking spaces. It is developed with a 3,325-square-foot industrial building and a 1,125-square-foot outdoor play area located at the rear of the property. The adjacent site at 1619 Superior Avenue is a 14,374-square-foot lot developed with a 489-square-foot office and a 972-square-foot garage. The property is currently vacant and was previously occupied by a car wash. The existing outdoor play area at 1629 Superior would be expanded to be 2,300 square feet and would remain at the rear of the property. The site would be conditioned to only contain 46 dogs. The parking configuration would also be modified by relocating the parking spaces from the rear to the center of the property, resulting in a total of eight parking spaces. At 1619 Superior, the applicant proposes to utilize both existing buildings. The 489-square-foot office would serve as a staff workspace, and the 972-square-foot garage will be converted into an indoor and outdoor play area as well as a feeding area. A 5,090-square-foot outdoor play area will also be developed. A condition of approval limits the site to only 51 dogs, and it will be supervised by one staff member for 10 to 15 dogs. The site will provide a total of 11 parking spaces and one bicycle rack. Through this application, the applicant proposes to update the landscaping across both sites, as shown in the conceptual landscape plan. The applicant will submit a final landscape plan during the plan check to ensure full compliance with the city's landscape standards. As previously mentioned, both businesses will operate from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The dog play area will operate from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the play areas will be connected to each other with a gate at the property line that would allow for access between both sites. Each site will employ four to six staff members, and on-call veterinary services will be available. All grooming and overnight boarding will occur at 1629 Superior, while 1619 Superior will only operate as a single-day dog daycare facility. Conditions of approval have been included to ensure proper operation, including the outdoor yard use within the designated outdoor play area per the approved site plan shall be limited from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and dogs at all times will be supervised by facility staff. The applicant shall monitor outdoor areas, including driveways and parking areas, and clean up as necessary to prevent odors and other nuisances. All exterior doors shall be maintained in the closed position during the daytime and nighttime hours. Pursuant to Costa Mesa Municipal Code Section 13-29D, three types of public notifications have been completed no less than 10 days prior to the date of the public hearing. Mail notices to property owners and tenants, onsite posting at the subject properties, and a newspaper publication. As of November 22nd, one public comment was received. One additional comment was received before today's noon deadline. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the following resolutions. Find the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities. Approve conditional use permit PCUP-250018, subject to conditions of approval, and approve conditional use permit PCUP-250019, subject to conditions of approval. The Planning Commission may also approve the projects with modifications. The Planning Commission may suggest specific changes that are necessary to alleviate concerns. If any of the additional requested changes are substantial, the item should be continued to a future meeting to allow a redesign or additional analysis. In the event of significant modifications to the proposal, staff will return with a revised resolution incorporating findings and/or conditions. The Planning Commission may also deny the project. If the Planning Commission believes that there are insufficient facts to support the findings for approval, the Planning Commission must deny the application, provide facts in support of denial, and direct staff to incorporate the findings into a resolution for denial. If the project is denied, the applicant could not submit substantially the same type of application for six months. This concludes staff presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. The applicant has also prepared a presentation for the commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Dixon?
Just a quick clarification. So there's 1619, there's 1629, and the 51 dogs are for the 5,090 square feet at the new facility, correct? Would that, would that condition of approval imposing limitations on the 2,000-square-feet of dog play area at the current facility?
No. The condition of approval, there's two separate conditions of approval.
Okay.
One that will limit it at 1619 for 51 dogs, and the existing facility will be limited to its original 46 dogs.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. First, I want to just check on wording for one of the conditions, number 20, which is on page 39. It mentions double doors and double gates. And having toured the facility, I understand the meaning, but I just want to make sure that the meaning here is understood as not having two doors next to each other, but a system of one door after the other, and if that's clear in this resolution or if we need to change the language.
That is the intent.
Okay. Just want to make sure. I wanted to ask, did we ask for the noise study, or did the applicant of their own accord provide it to us?
The applicant provided it on its own accord.
Okay. And then, why is this two separate conditional use permits? And did we require them to, like, pay two separate CUP fees?
That's a good question. Yeah, so it is, it needs to be two separate entitlements because the two properties are not owned by the same property owner. When the applicant initially reached out to the Planning Division, we asked if it was possible to get a law tie to just do an amendment essentially for an expansion. However, since they're not owned by the same property owner, it requires two conditional use permits. We've added specific conditions of approval in case they ever lose, you know, the lease of one of the properties so that they could still operate, and that's kind of the intent, that's the intent of the two entitlements.
And then, did they have to do, pay two fees?
No, they only paid one fee.
Good. Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you. So I would quickly follow up on Commissioner Martinez's observation about the condition of approval that refers to double doors. And I think in ordinary vernacular, double door is a six-foot-wide-cased opening, and what you're intending there is a vestibule-type arrangement. But what isn't clear to me, and this is the nature of my question about that, is whether you are requiring vestibule or you're simply requiring that they have some system to prevent dogs from running loose. And the system may include vestibules, but you're not mandating that.
So it'd be the latter. The applicant shall employ measures, and vestibules could be a form of it.
Thank you for that. Okay, I've got kind of another wording question. So on page 39 of the conditions of approval for the new expansion area, condition of approval number 11 says kenneling shall not take place at this location. On page 50, there's a condition of approval number 14 that refers to overnight stays. So my question is, are you using the words kenneling and overnight stays to essentially mean the same thing?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And then, so that's a little confusing, but I understand you now. And then, on page 51, condition of approval number 28, I think I understand your intent here, but let me poke at it and tell you why it sounded a bit confusing to me. The first part of that condition essentially is saying if the expanded area ceases to operate, then you want to put back into place the physical conditions that essentially create two separate properties. And I get that. The last sentence of that, though, sounds a little confusing because it says, "The business shall be able to operate independently on the subject location." And don't you mean by that second sentence, "If 1619 ceases to operate"?
Correct.
So if you added the word "and," "the business shall be able to operate independently," then you, I think, more clearly describe the condition that you expect should 1619 cease to operate, that both conditions must be met if that were to happen. So if you just make a note of that, I think that will make things clearer. And then I'm a little puzzled why both of these conditions of approval state a maximum number of dogs. 51 for the expanded area, 38, yeah, 51 for the expanded area, 46 for the old. Also, in the conditions of approval, say 10 to 15 dogs per handler. So what is it, why are we setting in the conditions of approval the maximum number of dogs?
So the maximum number of dogs was established by 100 square feet per dog, essentially allowing, for the new facility, it's 5,090 square feet, so that is roughly about, if you divide that by 100, you get 51 dogs. So that's how we got that. The original entitlement also had one dog, one staff person for every 10 to 15 dogs, so it allowed it to be consistent and also allowed it to maintain, I guess, control of the dogs in a way.
So where does that metric, 100 square feet per dog, come from?
It comes from, and I'd have to pull it up, it's in here, but kenneling facility, it's referenced in the original entitlement of the property. It's in the applicant's letter as well.
When the original application was processed and reviewed by the commission, that was what was submitted as an appropriate density of dogs, if you will, and we carried that through with this, but the applicant may be able to speak a little bit better as to why that condition is included.
I'm sure the applicant is fine with it. I'm just wondering if it's a number, because this often happens when there's these types of limiting conditions, where it came from an applicant as opposed to having some authoritative source of, like, the American Kenneling Association, or I made that name up, something, you know, along those lines. So...
Yes, staff isn't aware of requirement from animal services or permitting or, you know, regulation that's requiring it, but it was part of the overall package and part of the concerns for also keeping the number of dogs down in the outdoor play area, making sure they can, you know, clean up after them, and kind of the whole functionality of the business.
If the applicant later said, "You know what, 51, we really need room for 60," what would be the process for them to come back and get this condition of approval changed to 60 from 51?
They would have to amend the use permit.
Would it come back to us, or would it be a ministerial decision?
It would come in as a minor conditional use permit. That'd be approved by the zoning administrator.
All right. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
One more quick follow-up.
Commissioner Dixon.
And I appreciate, I greatly appreciate the quiet enjoyment conditions of approval, typically, but for general industrial, is that appropriate? And I know we have noise conditions in here, and so I just didn't want to, I want to make sure we're not stepping on the intent of the district.
You, I think you're correct, so there's, our noise ordinance doesn't apply to the industrial area. I think that's kind of one of the things that we looked at as well. But we did want to include the condition of approval to still have the neighboring properties to have a way to review, and if we get complaints, to have something to point to and discuss with the applicant, to allow the quiet enjoyment for other properties as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to come to the podium, and if you would, for the record, state your name in, and also if you have read the conditions of approval and agree to those. Give me one second, let me get your mic on. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Diane Kunitz. I am the owner and founder of The Bone Adventure headquartered in Costa Mesa, California, two locations. And yes, I have read the conditions of approval, and I agree. Well, I'm, most of them I agree, I'm gonna do, but I wish a couple of them weren't there. But they're fine.
Okay.
You ready for me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, I'm just gonna, Freyland, you did a great job of just presenting us. I just wanted to kind of put a little bit of structure behind who we are and that sort of thing. This is my third planning commission presentation. I think that Giannetta and I are probably the only people that were here in 2003 for the first one. But in 2003, doggy daycare was an unknown commodity. It was, there was none, there were no doggy daycares in Costa Mesa, Newport, Irvine, Huntington. So I came up with this idea, and it was very controversial. It was very difficult, and Costa Mesa took a leap of faith in allowing us to do this. Freyland, could you go to the next slide? So we've done this for 23 years. Our business blossomed as a result of the trust that Costa Mesa had in us, and I believe we set the standard for, you know, like, doggy daycares in our area. There's a lot of very nice doggy daycares in Costa Mesa and in Orange County, and we were among the first, and so I think it's been a good relationship. We have two locations. Our services are cage-free daycare, overnight boarding, bathing and grooming services, and we have a swim club at Bone Backyard. Next slide, please. So The Bone Backyard was our second CUP. It was, we got it in 2010. Bone Backyard is on Bristol between Gonal Lumber and the lab. It's on an acre of land, like 44,000 square feet. We have nine play areas, vinyl fencing, canine grass throughout. The thing that's so nice about that location is that it was a former nursery. So on the front, in the parking lot, you see these huge legacy trees, and in the backyard where all the dogs play, same, huge trees that were, that were put in like in 1965 or something like that. And it's just really, it provides shade for the dogs, and it's just a beautiful play area. So we also built a swimming pool in 2018 there, so dogs can dock dive, learn to swim. We have a life vest for every shape and size of a dog, and we even provide dock diving lessons and dock diving competitions there. But backing, so we have two locations in Costa Mesa, so back to Bone Home. Freyland did a great job of describing what it is, so I don't, I don't need to, but it was a detailing and a car wash before, and it was Steve's detailing, and then it was Jimmy's, and when it became available, we just jumped on it, because it's a smaller location than what the backyard is. It's never going to be as big as the backyard, but it's going to be bigger than it is, and it will allow us to just have bigger play areas, more play areas, and we can talk about it more in, with another person that's going to come up. But my primary, my personal reason for doing this and wanting to expand is that we've been in business for 23 years, and we have a lot of employees that have been with us for five, 10, and 15 years. This is the first new thing that we've done since 2010, and it really gives an on-ramp for people that have been working really hard, and they've perfected this skill. I mean, we have a lot of people that come, and it's their first job, being a dog handler at The Bone Adventure, but we have dog handlers that have been there five and 10 years, and it takes time to become good at it. Those of you who have been in, around dogs in a cage-free environment, you got to have a skill, so I'm just hoping that this will provide the career growth that I'm hoping for my staff. So, next slide. We have a team here, people that I want you to meet, so it's just not just me. It was just me in 2003, and Giannetta, but now we have a really nice group of managers and people that you can count on in case there are any problems or complaints. So Brian Roters is our general manager, and he's going to come up, and Freyland's done a lot of his presentation, but I think just to kind of give you our vision of what it's going to look like. And then PJ Culver's going to come up for a couple of minutes and just talk about what we're going to do with the dogs in that environment. We have brought Barry Walker here, who's our architect, and he did all of the drawings, so if any questions come up about the plans, he's here. And Robert Wu is our noise consultant. He's principal at Acoustic, the Acoustic Group, and we hired him just in abundance of caution, because there's residences. There were not residences in 2003, but there's residences now, and we've been coexisting with them for as long as they've been around, which is, I think, 10 years. So it's, we're trying to grow, but we also want to make sure that we're not a problem, and that we want to be a good neighbor. So the other person that is here to answer questions, there's two things that I thought would come up, noise and sanitation. And Giannetta Villalobos has worked with me since 2003, and he and his team have built a first-class operation. We have never had a complaint from a neighbor about odor or anything like that. We know how to put turf down, we understand drainage, we understand sanitizing processes, and he's here to answer any questions that you have. So you have my commitment that if we get this opportunity, it's going to be a beautiful facility, it's going to be clean, we will comply with all the government regulations, but primarily, oh, go to the next slide, Freyland, I'm sorry. That's my team right here. But primarily, it is, we will comply with everything and obey all the rules, but the bottom line is that we have to be a good neighbor, and we've been a good neighbor for 23 years, and we're going to be a good neighbor for 23 more years. It's not like that nobody's ever complained about the barking, but if it happens and we're not paying attention, we know about it, and we can, we can correct it in 10 minutes, and everybody is hyper vigilant about that, especially at this location. So, without any further ado, I'm going to ask Brian to come up and just give you a little bit of an idea of what it's going to look like. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Roters, and I'm the general manager at The Bone Adventure. And thank you, Freyland, you did actually cover a lot of what I was going to speak on tonight. May I go to the next slide? So this was an early conceptual drawing that we put together, just of an idea of how the property would go together, and things like that, of what it would look like in the back, you know, as one entity. As you can see in the back, like you guys saw in the site plan, the back area is going to be canine grass, expanded play yards to add more room for the dogs to play, adds more enrichment for them as well, you know, make sure we have opportunity to have specialized care for the dogs and different types of play groups throughout as well. The back area is also going to have that perimeter walkway that was on the site plan there also. It does introduce the, I guess we call it double gate system, but basically the separate section that does block, you know, allow for safety of the dogs to be transferred from one section to another, with having one gate and a space, and then another gate before the duck goes through. This also allows nice, easy access throughout the, you know, entire perimeter of the facility to get to any one of the yards and inside the building as well. I know Diane mentioned the canine grass also, but canine grass is specifically designed for dog play areas. It's used in dog daycares and dog parks all over the world now. It provides a safe area for the dogs to run and play. It's also, you know, very cleanly as well. You can sanitize it and clean it, things like that, too. The two buildings on 1619, as Freyland mentioned, the office space on the center house there is what we'll be using that one for. The existing use for it now is an office, we'll be using it for office space also. We'll also be planning on putting some shade coverings in the yards as well, for shade for the staff and for the dogs, to make sure everybody's comfortable outside. Throughout the yard, we'll be introducing some water features, like you saw in the earlier pictures there, that we've done at both of our locations, for fun, entertainment for the dogs, as well as, you know, helping keep them cool during the summertime. I know Freyland talked about parking as well. The 1619 will be adding 11 parking spaces. And then, as well, since we'll be adding a bunch of new landscaping also, we're hoping to create kind of a cohesive look and unity between both properties with the new landscaping that's going to be out in front, in the setback zone, as well as additional trees in the back to provide shade and additional foliage for the dogs and staff as well in the back, and just hopefully to, you know, increase the, you know, beauty of the whole neighborhood. And then, with that, introduce PJ, he's going to talk about the dog play areas a little bit.
Good evening. My name is PJ Culver, I'm a manager over at The Bone Adventure. If you would, go to the next slide, please. So this expansion's going to allow us to have more specialized play groups for the dogs. We're going to be able to increase the space and the yard quality for what we now have is our regular big dogs and little dog groups. We're excited at the possibility of having new yard space and groups specifically designed for, you know, our rowdy dogs, as we call them, and now also senior dogs and puppies. Next slide. All of our overnight boarding is going to remain at the current 1629 Superior Avenue location, so our boarding dogs spend the night in one of our custom-built hotel rooms, and we also have the option for some of them to sleep slumber party style, for the option to curl up next to some of our overnight staff and sleep on one of the beds in there. So we'll remain being staffed 24 hours a day. Next slide. And then, in our 23 years at 1629 Superior Avenue and in Costa Mesa, we've always worked to try and be good neighbors to everyone around us and in the community. So more recently, we've partnered with a nonprofit named Unconditional. We've done multiple events to benefit senior and disabled dogs. We work to keep our facility and the dog yards clean and safe with extensive sanitizing and deep cleaning, and we're always training and working with our staff and our clients to keep any nuisance barking and excessive noise under control. So we are, we're very excited at the potential this expansion brings to the staff, to the Costa Mesa community, and for all the dogs that we care for, so. That's all we got. We did have a music video, but we're going to skip that, I think, for today, so. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you. I'm not sure who to address the question to, but it has to do with, with two parts. Number one, so you're not able, whoever, maybe Diane, if you could come to the microphone. None of this is increasing your capacity for kenneling, correct?
We did a, kind of a report over the last year. We would, we would be at maximum around the holidays, so we've, we've been full for the holidays, but most of the time during the year, we are not close to being at maximum for boarding up there. So we will increase it, but we aren't planning on adding square footage for, for boarding.
Got it. And then, the wording in the condition of approval that relates to overnight staffing is a security person. I think PJ used kind of a different term.
Overnighter.
Yeah, so I'm assuming the people that you have there overnight have dog skills? It's not a security guard with a...
Yeah, we, we made a decision at the very beginning that we weren't going to have a security guard. We need somebody that knows the dogs, they understand the dog behavior, they work there. So they're students that do their studying there. We have chores that they need to do until about 10 o'clock. A lot of them stay up all night studying and that sort of stuff, because the dogs are in bed, but it's definitely a part of our group, the overnighter group.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay.
He hit his first.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. First, I want to ask, I see that they have, I just noticed that they have separate names, Bone Home and Bone Adventure. So is the plan to operate them semi-independently, or is it...
Well, maybe we can kind of correct that. The whole company, including the one on Bristol, is called The Bone Adventure, and the one on, the building that we're currently in on Superior is called Bone Home. And so we're just going to call the new property an extension of Bone Home.
Gotcha, okay. I'll staff later if that needs to be corrected in our resolutions. For the parking lot on the new site, there's a fence or a wall between, between the parking lot for the old site and the new site, and then you have the walkway. So how, how's it planned for whoever is using that new property parking lot to enter the facility?
Can we, Mr. Garcia, can we put up a site plan?
I think you're talking, you're talking about the fence that's in between the property line or on the property line?
Yeah, so I'm just saying, there is a fence that exists on the property line, and there's the walkway. So if anyone comes into this new southern parking lot, what is the plan for them to enter the property?
So the, if they're on the southern parking lot, the fence that would be separating the property lines, an individual will be able to walk into the current building at 1629, because the fence would be, is noted as being removed. Does that make sense?
Okay, so there...
So like, if you're looking at parking spaces like four, five, and six, currently there's a vinyl fence there, that fence is being removed, so somebody would be able to just walk straight into the building.
Got it. Okay, yeah, the property line made me think that was a fence. Okay, is, would anyone be able to enter the office through the office space in the southern part, or does everyone have to go to the...
We are setting it up, so that is a possibility. Our intention, as long as we have the lease on both properties, is not really to do it that way, but we're designing it so it could be operated that way.
Okay. Those are the technical ones, and then I just wanted to, you mentioned at the beginning that there were some conditions. I don't know if you were just, if you were just joking, but I am curious if, if you have any amendments.
You know, it's, I've gotten used to it. I've accepted it. It's the, the little dog park that we have in the front of our building at 1629, I think I mentioned that to you when I met you. We, we were so proud of it. We, we were so proud of it, and you can't have fake grass adjacent to the sidewalk. So we're having to rip it out, put trees in, get rid of the dog park. We're going to hopefully try to keep it because people that walk by with their dogs use it. It's a, it's, people use it. And so that was the only thing that I was kind of, but I understand the, the requirement to make things pretty. I want it to be beautiful and so.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dixon?
Just a quick question regarding the, so when you, you were talking about the noise abatement, you were talking about nuisance barking. I have two great Pyrenees. I'm extraordinarily well familiar with that. So dogs bark, right? They start barking and then you stop them barking. So that, that is my, and you said you do it relatively quickly. You have staff members there, and I saw a reference to electric collars. That's controversial, I know. We have beep ones in ours that we don't shock them, they just...
Yeah, the ones that we have in our service contract that we have people sign, it references a citronella collar, so it's actually not a, we don't use shock collars on our dogs.
Right, right. Because sometimes the beep just distracts them for a second and then they stop.
Correct.
Right, so, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll give you an opportunity at the end of public comment if you want to respond to any comments or have any concluding remarks, but feel free to sit down and...
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, would this be an opportunity for Robert Wu to answer any questions about the study or we're good with it?
I think we're okay right now.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, approach either podium if you're in chambers or if you're on Zoom, use the raise hand option, and if you're joining by phone, you can use star nine to speak. All right. Go right ahead.
All right, through the chair. So a nice staff presentation. I'm not surprised to see Frohlin do a nice job here, and if I'm not mistaken, I see some Victor fingerprints here, so nice job. I think it's smart to combine these two. I thought they were going to be handled separately, not only to combine them into one motion, but also to have one fee is fantastic. We need to recognize this is an operator in good standing after 23 years. You're not here seeing, the only letter is a letter of support. You don't see a history of code violations. You see an operator who's kind of figured things out. They have figured out the environmental, they've figured out the odor, they've figured out how to put dogs together that are friendly and don't cause a barking episode. There have been no issues. And rather than rest on those laurels and say, trust us, we've, you know, the best predictor of future behavior is historical performance, they went out and spent a lot of money unsolicited to come here and give neighbors, the staff, the commission, the comfort that they really wanted to have a customized solution on probably arguably the biggest thing outside of parking is the noise, right? I bet that's a $7,000 to $10,000 expense that should be celebrated. So on top of all their best practices and their training and the history of longstanding employees, they went out and did that. So I think this is a fantastic business that should be celebrated. I will tell you that I had two of my boys there this weekend, and this won't come to anybody's surprise, one of my boys was put in timeout over the weekend and has to come back for additional training, so like father, like son. So hey, I looked in Tessa, I couldn't find on either address either one of these CUPs. When the city's animal hospital over on East 16th came through, I couldn't find that either. So I would just, you know, Tessa's supposed to be a tool. I'm pretty good at this. I use it in a lot of different cities. I tried every iteration under the book and couldn't find anything. It should be easy and it's a tool that's, that's in there. The other thing is, I really want to get to improving the glacial pace of government. Commissioner Dixon, when you were my vice chair, we used to regularly have five and six public hearings. We have one and only one, right? I just think we need to be more productive. I would ask staff to include in every staff report when the application came in and how long it's taken to process that application, how many cycles had to go back and forth so that we can get an estimate of not just the activity, but the accomplishment. And until then, I would ask every applicant that comes to the, to the podium, kind of how long did it take? How many iterations? How was this process? We need to change it, but fantastic staff presentation. Here's what I need to hear. Race to the button. I make a motion to seek or exempt based on the findings in Exhibit A, subject to the conditions in Exhibit B. Welcome these people to another 23 years. They deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have any further questions of staff or the applicants? I have one of staff, which is that I noticed in the staff report, one of the items was the applicant's letter to us, which appears, attachment to, which appears to be dated September 29th of this year, so less than a month. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Just the technical one, if we have to change the business name for the, for the resolutions.
That's not how long it took to process the application. I don't think it's a requirement. The Bone Adventure is the name of the overall business overall in all locations we can, but the entitlement is limited to the use regardless of the name of the business. So if, to be accurate, we can update it, but just to be clear, the outside of the building at the location, I think, says Bone Adventure on Superior, too, so it is a bit confusing back and forth. So whatever the applicant would prefer to call it, I think I would defer to the applicant.
All right. Should be fine as this.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
Just a quick follow-up question on my quiet enjoyment question. So typically, how would that be addressed? If you start getting complaints about barking, is that something where there's a level or a degree, or is it any noise whatsoever, or I just want to, because dogs bark and then you stop them barking? So that's my concern.
I think we would, it depends on the nature of the complaint and how it comes in. I think we have a code enforcement team that would go out there and evaluate, see if there is, is a concern. And that's why we had the quiet enjoyment of the neighboring properties, right? If there is barking, excessive barking in the neighboring properties and we have a code complaint, then we would address it at that point.
Okay. Did you have something to add? I just thought you were getting, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing further...
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Andrade.
Staff, on the applicant's concern about, or maybe it's a clarifying question for staff, are we completely eliminating that little doggy park right on the curve?
It, it's now being proposed to be live plants and landscaping, which is required by code.
So it's required by code, but can the applicant still welcome folks to use that as a little doggy park?
Yes, they could.
They could? Okay, great. Other than that, I just also wanted to comment on and appreciate the support in the, of the applicant's work on submitting that sound study. I think it's helpful.
Andrade, I'm going to hold you right there.
Yeah.
Keep your comments for when we have our motion.
Got it.
Okay. But I appreciate that. All right. Do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution to find that the project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities, and approve conditional use permit PCUP-25-0018 and PCUP-250019 based on findings of fact and subject to conditions of approval with two amendments to each one. Change condition of approval number 20 in both of them so that it reads, but not limited to double doors, double gates, comma, and vestibule systems, to address Vice Chair Zick. And change condition of approval number 17 in the first CUP and number 28 in the second CUP so that the last sentence is just a clause of the first sentence. So basically after the parentheses, it would be a comma instead.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Martinez. I see a second by Commissioner Andrade. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the amendments? Okay. Commissioner Martinez, do you like to speak to your motion?
And then Commissioner Dixon has, has just requested one. Pass me a note in, I guess this is the second CUP, to remove the word "security" from condition of approval number 14 so that it's just a staff person on site and not a security staff person.
Okay.
Page 50, 50.
Commissioner Andrade, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Yeah, this, I, I had the amazing opportunity to tour the site. It was very nice. I had a, I'll say a client, a dog client almost jump on me as I was walking in. That was very fun. Yeah, this applicant went above and beyond to do the noise study. As I was going through the noise study, I, I saw that basically most of the noise there would be background noise from traffic and from the industrial surroundings. So that's good, good to see. Very happy to see bike rack included, very happy to see two driveways turn into one driveway for improved pedestrian walkability. Based on the staff report, we have had minimal complaints at this side of the other site, and last complaint was probably decades ago. It's good to see a continued business thrive here in Costa Mesa, and I'm happy to see you guys expand. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrade?
Yes, as I was saying, as I was saying earlier, just taking that extra precaution for the neighbors, I think it's a very nice touch and again demonstrating that you're here to be a good, continue to be a good neighbor. And the details about, you know, the staff person per dog ratio truly is a best practice for someone that has had to take pets around to different daycare centers, that's, that's truly appreciated because you clearly are taking this job very seriously for the care of people's hairy, hairy children, however you want to call it. So thank you.
All right. Any other comments, commissioners?
Just a quick one.
Yes, go ahead.
I've been by there when we were trying to board our dogs, and we'll probably bring them there in the future as well, but it is very well-run. We have a not well-behaving dog, so we were not able to board. So that to me indicates that there, it's a very well-run operation. And I also like to note that we had a resident submit a public comment stating that they've had no problems with it and they're enthusiastic supporters. So, I mean, what else do you need? It's a, it's a well-regarded business. It's been there for a long time. You went above and beyond. I really appreciate it. So I'm going to be enthusiastically supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you very much for not only being a good neighbor, but a great business, and also for continuing to invest in Costa Mesa. Much the chagrin of my daughters, my, my boy Oliver is my hairy, I'll say companion is my favorite. And he's on the screensaver on my phone, not my kids. But I, I share that only because I recognize the importance of people and, and their pets. They have very deep relationships, and so you provide not just a service for us as, as their responsible parties, but also to have a great place for them. I know my dog, when he comes back from grooming, is always very happy and thankfully very exhausted, too. So, all right. With that, let's call for the question.
That motion carries 7-0.
All right. Thank you very much. That is final unless appeal, decision is final unless appealed to the council within a week. Congratulations. All right, we have one old business item tonight, and let's give a moment to get staff up here. And I'll report in the meantime that at the bottom of the fifth, the Dodgers are behind by two runs.
Oh, no.
Oh, wait, no, sorry. Tied up. Excuse me. See how things changed in an instant?
We should have thanked Mr. Wu. Reminds me of the few good men when the two...
Just their presence?
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Sorry, Anna, will you please read the item for new, old business item? Oh, no, sorry, new business item number one. I'm sorry, excuse me, it's old business item.
Old business item number one, minor conditional use permit ZA-22-35. Condition of approval 28, 12-month review, Arena OC.
All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Villalobos. You have to, Florid, present the item.
Good evening, Chair of Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Villalobos, and I'm an assistant planner with Economic and Development Services Department, and tonight I'm presenting my, my findings for the 12-month review for the business named Arena OC located at 2968 Randolph Avenue. On August 12th, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to approve minor conditional use permit ZA-2235. A request to amend the previously existing entitlements for Arena OC, formerly known as Commissary Lounge, a nightclub which was originally approved through a conditional use permit in 2013. Generally, the approved amendment expanded hours of operation and allowed for the establishment of a Type 90 music venue ABC license for the existing business in addition to other operational changes. The Type 90 license allows for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises in a music entertainment setting that does not prohibit minors from attending unlike other ABC licenses. The business qualifies as a music venue as it has clearly defined performance and audience spaces, includes sound and lighting equipment, and has ticketed events for performances. Of the changes approved through this amendment, one condition specifically was added which required both a six and 12-month review of the business by the Planning Commission after the effective date of approval. The intent of this condition was to review the impacts, if any, of the allowance of minors in this specific setting to city resources, including police and emergency services. The six-month review was originally held in April of this year, where determination was made that the business operated in compliance with the standard set and did not generate an increase in calls for service due to operational changes approved by the Planning Commission. The project site is located at 2968 Randolph Avenue, which is located south of the intersection of Baker Street and Randolph Avenue. The project site is currently developed with a one-story, 16,000-square-foot multi-tenant industrial building and is inhabited by the nightclub among other uses. The project site shares a driveway and an additional 24 parking spaces with the property just to the south, addressed as 2960 Randolph Avenue, which was the location of the previously operating Gunwell Ale's Brewery, now known as Synth Beer Company. The subject property is Zone MG or General Industrial and is surrounded by similarly Zone MG properties located to the west and south with C1 commercial zones to the north and east. Other land uses in the general vicinity include large commercial developments such as the camp and the lab as shown above with red stars, breweries such as Green Cheek along with Salty Bear and other bars and lounges such as the Huddle and Mesa as shown in blue. The remainder of the nearby area consists of other light industrial and commercial land uses, including offices, retail stores, and automotive repair shops. The closest located sensitive uses include two residential developments located more than 200 feet away from the subject property as shown by the green stars. The approval of the minor conditional use permit included modifications to previously established conditions, including things such as a modification of the hours of operation to allow the business to open at 8:00 PM instead of the previously allowed 9:00 PM, as well as expanding the days the business is allowed to operate to include Sunday and certain major holidays, subject to the approval of a special event permit. In addition, a change in ABC license from the previously approved Type 48, which allowed for beer, wine, and spirits for onsite consumption with no minors allowed, to the current Type 90 license. In addition, some additional project-specific conditions of approval were added to address safety concerns, including limiting 18-plus patrons to attend only on Thursdays and certain holidays, restrictions on bottle service, including establishing age-restricted areas to limit access by minors to alcohol, requiring readily available wristbands and age verification, as well as this requirement for Planning Commission review once the business has been in operation with the amended conditions. Staff is aware that the business has not been in operation for the past few months, and the business is currently being advertised as available for sale. The business owner has indicated that, that the business has not operated since May of this year, and the previous management group is no longer involved. Negotiations are currently in process for the transition to a new management group with a reopening date anticipated sometime in early 2026. with a reopening date anticipated sometime in early 2026. Business owner has been, has been notified that all currently approved conditions are still applicable and any changes in operations will require review and approval by planning staff and the planning commission. Staff has determined that there was no substantial increase in calls for service within the last year due to the allowance of minors within the premises. The calls for service log provided by the planning department, by the police department have been included as an attachment to the report. Of the calls logged within the last year, only two were determined to have taken place on a Thursday when minors may have been present at the venue. Staff believes that there has not been a substantial increase in calls as a result of the inclusion of underage patients at this venue and in part due to the lapse in operations. In addition, there have been no noise complaints or code violations logged at the property. As such, staff believes that the business is operating in good faith with the conditions imposed and does not believe any modifications to the conditions, conditions of approval are required at this time. Staff will continue working with the business to ensure that any operational changes considered during this transitional period are addressed accordingly and will process any amendments to the project entitlement as needed. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff? None? Okay. I'm going to, uh, open public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, please come to the podium. Or if you're participating by Zoom or by phone, use the raise hand option or star nine respectively. Anna, do we have anybody?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment. Any other concerns, questions, commissioners? Wow, quiet. Everybody wants to go see the Dodgers. I do not want to stand in the way of that, but I do have one question, which is that condition number 28, which we've been talking about, condition of approval. The language says it's a six month and a one year anniversary review. And then if the business is not operating in good faith, then planning commission could adjust the existing conditions of approval or, or add new ones. What I'd like to know is, since this is the one year review, does this condition now terminate by its own terms? Has the, has the, uh, holder, the applicant or entitlement holder fulfill their conditions fully? And this is no longer necessary?
The condition was specifically worded only to require a six month as well as a 12 month review. So after this point, the condition would be considered satisfied.
Okay. So that's what my assumption was. And then reading that the, the ownership is in flux, I'm just wondering whether or not we want to reinstate this and if we can, to make sure there's some protections with the, a future owner. So is that available to us? Director Tai?
Typically, because of the structure of land use entitlements and the way they run with the land, unless this condition had initially been worded to restart itself every time there was a new business owner. I do concur with Assistant Planner Vialobos that that condition is satisfied once the one year anniversary has been reached.
Okay. All right, fair enough. All right. Commissioners, anybody wanting to make a motion? Commissioner Dixon?
I move that we receive staff's 12 month review presentation and determine that no change in approved operating conditions are needed at this time.
Okay. I see a second by Commissioner Martinez. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No.
Okay. Let's call for the question. Oh, sorry, Vice Chair Zick.
Yeah, I wished to speak to the motion.
Yes, of course.
So a couple of the commissioners were here back in August, a year ago, when this thing was approved. And the only thing that I would want to point out, and I'm sure those that were here recall, but those that weren't, hopefully you look back at the previous staff report, including specifically the police department memo. They're frequently asked to opine on applications as they were for this original application. And as I said at the time, and I would repeat here, I don't think their letter could have been any clearer in expressing their lack of support for this. And I think that was the primary driver for requiring the six month and 12 month review. Understanding that that condition has been satisfied now by this review, I would simply point out that if we do have problems in the future at this location, this should be a CUP that we stay very closely aligned to in terms of compliance with conditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now let's call for the question.
That motion carries six one with Vice Chair Zick voting no.
All right. We have no new business items, departmental reports, public services, Mr. Yang?
Thank you, Chair Harland. Honorable Chair and Vice Chair Zick and honorable members of the commission, it's my pleasure to give the public works report. Our, our report is that the Costa Mesa Safe Rousers School and Fairview Road Improvement Project Joint Community Workshop is scheduled for November 6th at Costa Mesa High School, which is located on Fairview Road. In this event, we'll, staff and also the community will, will discuss and review the Safe Rousers School Plan and develop a recommended infrastructure improvements for the 23 public school campuses that serve our Costa Mesa residents. And the intent is to increase safe and convenient opportunities for children and to walk and bicycle to and from school. In addition to that, at the same event, we'll talk about the Fairview Road Improvement Project, which is from Fair Drive to Adams Avenue. The, the purpose of this project is to upgrade the current bicycle facility and provide transit stop improvements. And it's an event for both the community and for staff to discuss and come up with suggestions for this particular project. So once again, it's scheduled for November 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Costa Mesa High School. And that's it for my public report and I'll defer back to the chair.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Tai, anything from development services?
I will be delegating the director's report to Planning Manager Martina Carone. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carone.
Good evening, thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things to report. Just last week at the October 24th city council meeting, the council provided direction to study the Fairview Development Center, the FTC scope, as recommended by the planning commission, with the exception of increasing the minimum open space from 12 to 14 acres. Staff also requested that the city council provide direction on whether to study the harbor frontage area for open space or other uses. There was no action taken by the council resulting in direction for the study area. And then at the November 4th city council meeting, the city council will be considering the land use element and the cleanup items that were heard previously by the planning commission on October 13th. The city council will also receive an update on the neighborhoods where we all belong effort and outreach progress. And we look toward next steps with that council. That concludes my updates from the department.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Preziosi, city attorney reports?
Thank you, Chair Harland. I have no report this evening.
Okay, wonderful. I will adjourn the meeting.